We're going to call this meeting to order. Today's February thirteenth, twenty twenty five, the regular meeting for the Board of Trustees. Secretary Burford, please proceed with your call.
Trustees, please respond when I call your name. Christine Cronin.
Present.
Margot Keegan.
Present.
Gary George, he told us he'd be absent today. Chuck Hoffman. Orang Kikul.
Present.
Aaron Lair. Tamara Mabon.
Present on Zoom.
George Mendoza.
Here.
Cedric Greel.
Present.
Kelly Ryan.
Here.
Brenda Smith.
Present.
Anna Stanley.
Present.
Brad Stevens.
Here on Zoom.
Gary Thompson.
Here.
Mauricio Valero.
Present on Zoom.
Chair, we have a forum.
Thank you, Secretary Burford. Go ahead and do some opening announcements.
Okay, thank you. We ask everyone to please put your cell phones on do not disturb. If you brought a laptop, please be sure the speakers and microphone are turned off. Members of the media, if you haven't already done so, please sign the sign in sheet at the recorder's desk to my left. Likewise, anyone present in person who wishes to give public comment, please sign the sheet of course left to me. Actually, we're not doing public comment. I apologize. Take that out. To provide access to the public, we've invited them to attended person and it's being live streamed over the internet. And as I mentioned yesterday, the way our microphones work has changed. Now you have to press the right button for the mic to turn on and it will stay on until you press the button again. The mics are directional, so please point them at your face. And if you join us remotely, please keep yourself muted unless speaking. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Chris. All right, team, we have a Rise Point presentation. So I'd like to welcome Peter, Peter Venaria. And Silas Ballard. From Rise Point, they're going to talk to us today about current service, current services and market trends. And I'm glad that you took the time to get over here, especially in this, this weather. So it means a lot to me and means a lot to us. The floor is yours and thank you for, for the presentation.
Okay, well, Chairman Dosa, I'm warning you, stole my thunder, so I can just turn off the microphone.
And you got.
Let them run. No, it's really.
Well, thank you so much, everyone. Once again, my name is Pete Venaria. I am the Managing Director here at Rise Point, which means I am the main liaison with the Eastern Oregon Partnership. And I've been in this role and working with Eastern Oregon for about three odd years or so. And our goal today is to, as has been said, to talk a little bit about Rise Points at a high level. Talk about our services, talk about our impact for Eastern Oregon students with a little bit of market insights sprinkled in here and there, just to give you all a sense of the state of the union. Given the time constraints, I'm going to be very high level. But please do not hesitate to interrupt with any questions that you all may have. That's certainly why Silas and I are here, is to answer any questions about the services that you all might have.
My name is Silas Bowler. I'm the Senior Vice President for University Partnerships. I've worked at Rise Point for seven, seven and a half years. Very excited to be here with you all and go through this. So looking forward to hopefully some interactive pieces here. So if you have questions, please feel free to jump in and ask along the way.
Excellent. So as mentioned, we are Rise Point now, right? Early in twenty twenty four, Wiley University Services was acquired by Academic Partnerships, which was another OPM in the space. And then in May of twenty twenty four, we rebranded as a singular organization as Rise Point. So why did we bring these two organizations together? We had complementary types of partners and complementary types of skill sets. And so Legacy Wiley was really known for working with different types of institutions. We worked with regional public, regional private institutions, as well as had expertise in building up organic marketing for our partners. Legacy Academic Partnerships had expertise in working with regional public institutions such as Eastern Oregon, as well as expansive expertise in digital marketing. So we together have a deeper and better expertise and understanding of the market. So we can, we've worked with more types of programs. We can invest in different types of channels. It truly is bringing together the best of both institutions or both organizations, excuse me. And we feel like we're really well equipped to help our partners achieve our mutual outcomes, right? We are, the mutual shared outcomes are building out these workforce driven programs and having our students graduate from those programs. And so on the next slide, you see the size and scope of what Rise Point has become. Working with over one hundred twenty five university partners. And I give you the sense of the size and scope, not so much to understand how big we are, but to really understand this as the means and opportunity in which it is for us to achieve our mission, right? Rise Point is committed to providing our, with cooperation with our partner universities and providing life changing education for students that's more affordable, it's more accessible, and that's more meaningful for our local communities, right? So again, we've truly rebuilt this program, rebuilt this organization from the ground up. So we can help our partners achieve their goals for the long term, right? We are committed to that mission.
Peter, it's okay. Will you go back that, that slide just so we can see the little factory a little bit longer?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. Yep.
And I think you, you mentioned these are primarily regional institutions that you're working with.
It's a mix of regional and it's male regional. We work with a lot of public institutions and there are some private institutions that we work with as well.
Yeah, I think we have, we have quite a mix today, Chris. It's probably about eighty percent is in the regional public space. The legacy academic partnerships really had, was almost exclusively regional public institutions. And that's where we kind of built up the knowledge of how can we really be effective in the, the extension campuses, some of the different areas, the non R ones, the non land grant institutions in a state and be as effective in partnering to reach those collective goals together.
Thank you.
Yep.
What you see here on the screen is our mission statement.
And for us, it's really, you know, we're, we're committed to the outcome for the students. I mean, that's why, that's why people get into this a little bit. We look at what are the challenges in the higher education space? And how can we face those challenges based off what students are telling us across institutions? So that then we can partner and, and think forward, think about strategically, where do we go together? Knowing that there's a variety of challenges occurring today, some regulatory, some demographic based. And we have to be able to think through those together and present the best possible case forward from a strategic footing, so that we can continue to build and grow and ultimately get the students to a place where they're graduating.
Any questions on Rise Point as an organization, knowing that it is a change from the last time I was here a couple of years ago?
My quick question is on the two thousand programs. I'm assuming that's two thousand degrees or two thousand, something like that. Is that what you mean by programs?
Types of degree programs, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's a difference now. There's a lot of focus on, I think, smaller, faster kind of programs. We've, we've really built the organization around degree specific areas. We've been innovative with some partners where they've said, you know, we think it makes sense for our local market to go into certificates or stackable credentials, something along those lines. And we're happy to explore that with any of our partners, but primarily it's looking at degrees. Because we, we think that's where, you know, someone can really impact their station in life, they can get a better job opportunity. And that's, that's ultimately what we're trying to help build towards.
If I, and if I recall correctly, at least for our board, you, you have a methodology where you looked at our region, you looked at our institute, you looked at what programs you thought were going to be the right ones to propagate. And then you, you indicated over a three year period or four year period that we would ramp up and start to implement a certain amount of programs based on what you offer and what our region can handle. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's more or less correct in terms of how we engage. That's a, that's an evolving engaging process, right? Part of the thing, and Pete, if you want to skip ahead to the, the challenges we're facing, you know, the, the climate is different now, right? When we started partnering with you all, it was pre pandemic. I think the first programmatic launch was.
January of twenty twenty.
January of twenty twenty. So everything's been consistent and stayed the same during that period. So, so we, we look at that and we think, well, we need to, we need to be reactive, but also proactive in the marketplace. Today, the enrollment challenges and the challenges that we see in the marketplace really get boiled down into kind of these three bucket areas. And so we want to be responsive with that. When we were talking to you all in probably twenty sixteen through that first launch or whenever we initiated those conversations, that environment looked considerably different than the environment today. We could certainly forecast some of those pieces, right? Like this number one here in terms of enrollment challenges, fewer eighteen to twenty four year olds, that's not a surprise to anyone. We've known that's coming. There's a lot of research around the demographic cliff. So we think about, well, how can we be helpful with that, right? If you're getting fewer students on campus, because there's fewer students overall, then let's think about how we can be more effective expanding out what the geographic region looks like. And with COVID, you know, more students actually want to be in an online environment. They're more used to it, right? So being able to provide a different modality certainly helps in that as well. Pete, you want to walk us through the others?
So yeah, I, I think the only other thing I would mention here, other than, you know, the challenges that we see with, as Silas mentioned, this demographic cliff is, is the rise of, of what we call mega's institutions, right? These for profits, but they're, but they're bloated marketing budgets. Our research does show, which I'll share in a little bit, that, that students do prefer even going to an online program to go to an institution that is close to home, that has a physical campus, that has a brand that they recognize and they trust, right? So we know we can compete with the megas in that's, in that sense, when we work with the regional institutions. Because what do the megas do well, right? Other than what they can spend in marketing, they have multiple points of entry. They are really quick to admissions decisions. They're really quick to get students through those programs, right? So if we can set our programs up well, we know that we can compete with those mega institutions. And just continuing with the trend of market challenges, you know, we, we certainly know that it's a time of economic uncertainty. It's a, a time with, you know, evolving student behaviors and it's certainly a time with increased competition, right? Online is just not the same as was ten years ago. The competition has grown from over thirteen thousand programs being offered to over twenty six thousand programs being offered, which means that on an annual basis, we're seeing increased competition of nine percent every year, which is shrinking that perspective. Cool. So the way that we try to understand these changing student behaviors is by being committed to being a thought leader in the industry. And some of the ways that we do that is by conducting these research initiatives so that we can better understand student behavior. And this is critical for us because this is how we understand what is our strategy? How do we implement our best practices? We have to know, as Silas mentioned, what are the students thinking? So one of these research strategies that we do is this voice of the online learner report. This actually comes from a legacy Wiley initiative. It's done on an annual basis and some of these findings are pretty consistent, right? Cost is king. Students are always looking for something affordable. As I mentioned, students want something closer to home. They're typically choosing an, an institution fifty to a hundred miles from their, from their, where they are. And online adult education, these adult students, they need online education, as again Silas mentioned. They need the flexibility that online education provides. I should also note that in this study, Eastern Oregon students were involved. So a hundred and twenty six students completed that survey. And we did share those results with school leadership, just giving averages of what were the responses, what were the data? How did that differ from the whole pool that were responded? So it just gives us a sense of where is Eastern Oregon doing well and where do we need to improve on the student journey? Another study that we did is again, looking at outcomes, looking at that return on investment and, and what are students thinking about? So this was a study that we conducted across all Rise Point programs. And what we found is that eighty four percent of graduates who earned their degree thought that it was worth the investment through Rise Point programs. So we know that we're providing that necessary ingredient for students to continue with their careers to achieve their dreams.
It's really a critical data point for us. I mean, that's ultimately what everybody wants, right? Is to see the students go through. I, I think about it just for myself, but my station in life has changed because I went through and, and graduated from college. You know, it happens for all of us, probably everybody in this room or students that are currently in school. That's what they're thinking about. They want to, the end of graduation is a starting point for their life. And we want to be able to support that in the most meaningful way we can, which is why we conduct a lot of research that we can feed it back in and talk to you all from a strategic perspective and say, this is what the students are saying. How do we respond to that when we look forward?
I'm going to pause. Any questions on the market, where we stand on some of the research, anything?
Justin Keegan. Thank you. Yes, I do have a question. Thank you for being here, first of all. I want to thank you for being here. You did mention that although you were focused on degree programs, that you understood that there were some institutions that would be interested in certificates and endorsements and that kind of thing. I just want to clarify, make sure I heard you right when you said that you are prepared to support that. Should we decide to do something like that, you are prepared to support that kind of.
Yeah, absolutely. I think what we, when we're talking to our partner institutions and they say, what do you think about this? We like to step back and conduct a lot of research, look at what is the market demand, what is the student demand? So we, we hear from our, we hear locally and then we'll also hear it from our field team. And a field team will be in the field and will say, I've heard from employers or I've heard from students that they're interested in this. And then part of our approach is to provide some forecasts forward in terms of what that market demand really looks like. How can you support it? And that's true if it's a degree program or if it's a certificate program. And there's niche areas that we're happy to support on that might fit in this, excuse me, might fit in this geographic region, but wouldn't necessarily fit elsewhere in the country or at other partner institutions. So we want to make sure that we can think through that as much as possible and say, this is what it looks like for sustainability. If we launch a certificate program, we're happy to do that with partners. But we want to make sure that it's something that is viable and sustainable for you all in the long term. Does that make sense?
It, it does, but I just want to clarify. So I, am I hearing you right? So you work with us to build these curriculums based on the research you find? So if we decide we want to do this based on our own research, you wouldn't just support us in doing that?
We would absolutely support you, but we want to look through and provide the research that we can take from a hundred and twenty five partners or from looking at the, the higher ed landscape and provide that to you so that you can make a, a more informed decision or as a part of your informed decision.
Oh, I love research. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
And Margot, I would be happy to give you an example of some of the market research that Rise Point has delivered to us. Because Peter's work on the academic master plan has been supported by asking Rise Point to deliver us some information about which programs could take off here, should we invest and the faculty be agreeable to it.
Yeah, of course. And just to add one more thing, you know, the academic aspects are up to us. We design the curriculum. It's our responsibility. It goes through our approval processes. But the back to data, how it might perform in the market, that's, that's coming from Rice.
Yeah, good. Yeah.
Thank you very much for clarifying that.
So, so sorry, sometimes I'm long winded. You just got to say, so.
Okay, Vice Chair Cronin.
Yeah, I, I don't, not sure if this is the right place, but I'm looking at the voice of the online learner. I don't know if I heard the, if we have information on the percentage of online students versus on campus that come to us through the system that, that you have. Or is this only online learners that we're talking about?
So that report specifically is built to understand student behaviors for those that are going online. What they're thinking about, what, why they make decisions on the various institutions, what factors go into that? So that's the purpose of that report.
Okay, that, that's, I just needed some clarification on that. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I'm going to ask you to do two, and I know you have more things. I haven't seen your presentation in advance. But one would just be the relationship side that you have with students. So I've heard about the success coaches or the, the folks that you have that do that, if you can explain some of that. And then the other part is, you know, online, in the future of online versus brick and mortar in here and how you see the current market is right now and then how you see the current market within the next five years. And I don't even know those, those, that, those data points, if it's seventy percent go to, you know, on, you know, brick and mortar and thirty percent online, or if it's forty or, and sixty. But giving a quick, what is the truth on some of that? And then, and how are we, how are we keeping our students satisfied through you?
It's a good question. I'll answer your first question first, which is in terms of services. So we do have, I have on here just kind of a general overview of the services that we provide. You asked about students specifically, so we do work with students. So we have a student facing team that works with prospective students on the front end. So we have a team that will, when students reach out via the marketing efforts and raise their hand and say, I'm interested in your programs. We have students, we have a team that will work directly with those students to help them with the admissions process, to help them get the right materials in for that application package, work with them up until the start of classes. After which we do have a team that works with the matriculated students in terms of success coaching. So they're with them every step of the way again, in the hopes that they persist through the transition.
And just, just to go a little further there. And this, Margot, also shows the market research. That's really what we do, right? If you think about it in terms of outsourcing some research to us so that we can bring it back in and you can make informed decisions. Probably would have been a better way for me to say it. But George, to your question, the, all of the admissions is in-house here. We're doing the recruitment, the front end piece, and then we hand it off. And then our support services team is really more of a guide, right? Where we're helping the student make sure that they're registered. If they have a question specific to services the university provides, or they have a question specific to financial aid, then we'll route it back to the appropriate department here. We're really just trying to keep them going, knowing that there's a voice out there because it can feel isolating in the online environment. So we want them to feel connected to the EOU community as much as we possibly can. And that's kind of the bridge for our student support coaches.
And then just to, sorry, just to clarify, you know, every student online or on campus has a professional academic advisor, an EOU professional academic advisors. The success coaches supplement the academic advising with, with more success coaching, like you described.
Real quick, I'm, I, I, just because we have, we're having some questions on these, just maybe this will answer some old questions for you all. We can go back to discuss some of the capabilities we have and what we do, but I do think it's critical because we've had already some questions on. There's that thick black line of things that we don't do. There are lines that we do not cross, right? We do not make admissions decisions, right? We do not talk to students about financial aid. We are not teaching the courses. We don't credential students, right? They are graduates of Eastern Oregon. We are not providing the graduation. So these are these lines that, that we do not cross. We will give recommendations based on data, right? So if there's a new program that is going to be launched or a program that might be not performing up to speed, we will look across the competition and say, what is the admissions requirements for these programs in competition? What does the tuition look like for these competing programs? And provide those recommendations and, and data to faculty and administration. But at the end of the day, it is the institution that sets the admissions requirements. It's, it's the institution that sets the tuition.
And then the last part is the forecast of brick and mortar and online. And then we have trustee Stanley.
Thanks, Chair. Question for you on support that you guys provide. I noticed on there you guys had that you provide faculty support and I'm curious, what, what does that look like?
So we do have services that we provide for other partners in the form of academic services. You all do your own instructional design in-house, so we don't provide those services. We do have an opportunity for advising in certain places. So we did help build in, you know, conjunction with your team, the online orientation. What is it called? I'm forgetting off the top of my head, but we built the.
Mount near something. Trust it just sent.
Yeah. Move, that's it. I knew there was a fun acronym. Yes, we, we helped create the MOU in conjunction with ours, our team. But we don't provide the instructional design. We do that for other partners, but not for our contract reason.
I, I think, you know, we would love to support more in that area if you all wanted to use that as a resource, right? And it's similar to the question about market research. We can provide some best practices that other partners have, provide some tools and resources, some learnings for faculty. We have a faculty e-commerce area where faculty can learn about different services that we provide that are included in terms of the contracts, right? So it's a matter of how much the faculty wants to adopt and how much are they willing to pick up from that side? So it's a good resource. It can be looked at as a library. It can be looked at as career development and webinar, webinar pieces. It can be looked at as helping on the instructional design side. It's never on the curriculum build side. It might be on how things could display and some of those other pieces. The curriculum and the content is of course all yours.
Sure, thank you. One more question. Oh, I promise I'll stop holding this up. So how do, how do students then interface with your services? Walk me through what that looks like. Do you guys at all, can I get involved in our systems? I know we've been doing a lot of work with our early alert. So if you guys have success coaches, right, and we see that students may be falling behind in their courses, what does that process look like? Like, or what, what are you guys providing or maybe what services are there out there?
Yeah, so currently our admissions team, again, when someone fills out and raises their hand, so they fill out a request for information form via our marketing pieces, they say, hey, I'm interested in your programs. We have a team that reaches out and works with them. They do have EOU email addresses and work closely with the student to just understand what the program is, what the expectations and admissions requirements are, and to help walk them through, to guide them through the admissions process. After they get accepted and they matriculate, the success coaches are really there as a support.
But at the end of the day, it is the institution that sets the admissions requirements. It's, it's the institution that sets the tuition.
And then the last part is the forecast of brick and mortar and online, and then we have trustee Stanley.
Thanks, Chair. Question for you on support that you guys provide. I noticed on there you guys had that you provide faculty support and I'm curious, what, what does that look like?
So we do have services that we provide for other partners in the form of academic services. You all do your own instructional design in-house, so we don't provide those services. We do have an opportunity for advising in certain places. So we did help build in, you know, conjunction with your team, the online orientation. What is it called? I'm forgetting off the top of my head, but we built the.
Mount near something, Tressa just sent. Yeah.
Move, that's it. I knew there was a fun acronym. Yes, we, we helped create the MOO in conjunction with ours, our team. But we don't provide the instructional design. We do that for other partners, but not for our contract reason.
I, I think, you know, we would love to support more in that area if you all wanted to use that as a resource, right? And it's similar to the question about market research. We can provide some best practices that other partners have, provide some tools and resources, some learnings for faculty. We have a faculty e-commerce area where faculty can learn about different services that we provide that are included in terms of the contracts, right? So it's a matter of how much the faculty wants to adopt and how much are they willing to pick up from that side? So it's a good resource. It can be looked at as a library. It can be looked at as career development and webinar, webinar pieces. It can be looked at as helping on the instructional design side. It's never on the curriculum build side. It might be on how things could display and some of those other pieces. The curriculum and the content is of course all yours.
Sure, thank you. One more question that, oh, I promise I'll stop holding this up. So how do, how do students then interface with your services? Walk me through what that looks like. Do you guys at all, can I get involved in our systems? I know we've been doing a lot of work with our early alert. So if you guys have success coaches, right, and we see that students may be falling behind in their courses, what does that process look like? Like, or what, what are you guys providing or maybe what services are there out there?
Yeah, so currently our admissions team, again, when someone fills out and raises their hand, so they fill out a request for information form via our marketing pieces, they say, hey, I'm interested in your programs. We have a team that reaches out and works with them. They do have EOU email addresses and work closely with the student to just understand what the program is, what the expectations and admissions requirements are, and to help walk them through, to guide them through the admissions process. After they get accepted and they matriculate, the success coaches are really there as a support team. You know, again, as Silas mentioned, hey, are you registered for this next round of courses? Do you have your plan in place? A lot of times they're coaching them up, as we know, a lot of these students are working adults. They're have job commitments. They have family commitments. So it, it's hard. It's not easy to get through an undergraduate and graduate program online. So that, that team is there to help support them in any way. Again, sometimes even being that life coach to say, what do you need? A lot of our information we keep in that, when we ask students with, e- even intake interviews, we learn about what are your motivations? Why do you want to achieve this degree? And we help remind them of the why, the outcome, the persistence to the degree. So it's really just a support base. Any academic advising, as Peter mentioned, that falls on the, the Eastern Oregon team.
So just, so we're aware, we're gonna go past our time. And if anything, I'm thinking we, we missed our break since we just already had a tour. So we can spend another 10 minutes hearing or asking questions. And I think we don't have Rise Point with us every day. So if we want to spend a good amount of time with them, I think it's important to understand what they do for EOU and, and what it looks like for EOU. Is there any, like, I want us to keep, if you got, I know you got more things.
Just a couple more.
Yeah, and, and then I want us to keep asking questions.
Yep, absolutely.
George, can, okay, can I ask a question or maybe help Anna understand a little bit too? As an academic advisor, I work with the success coaches quite a bit. And, you know, they're very valuable to what we do. They take care of the first term of registration for students. Advisors reach out, you know, if they're not getting registered, the success coaches jump in there, you know, put them in contact with us. Military students I work with, they always refer them to me first, make sure that we get all their paperwork taken care of. And let's just continue this conversation with them. We meet with the enrollment counselors, success coaches, I think twice a month. And we used to have weekly meetings with them, but the advising redesign would change that every two weeks. But there's quite a bit of contact with them, so they're valuable service for us.
Sure, that's, you bring up an excellent point. Thank you, that I, I failed to mention is that we really act like a team and an extension of the university, right? We work very closely with folks on campus to ensure that we're not doing duplicate efforts. We're all pulling on the same side of the rope, right? That this is not us working in a silo. We work really closely with the team here to understand how can we best reach the students, whether that's prospective students from a trickery.
I think, George, I want to come back to your question. There is a question on, I think, think someone has their hand up online.
Whoever that might be, I can't see, but definitely.
Thank you. That will be me. That will be me. This is. Thank you. So I have a question you mentioned a couple of times. Thank you for being here, by the way. Learning a lot. You mentioned a couple of times about branding and brands. What, how important is a brand and what have you learned about our brand? Our EOU brand, they may help us, and especially the rural part, Oregon Rural University brand. So how important the brand is in a final choice, a selection, and what have you learned about our brand?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So brand is one of the top three to five choice points, data points for a prospective student. The first two typically are cost of program and length of program. From there, brand preference really plays a role in, and for the majority of students, it's in that three to five bucket. They might, students might have questions about how program is set up, especially if they're looking at graduate programs. They might have more interest in a particular discipline, in a particular area prior to identifying brand as a core piece in terms of making a decision. So it registers high in terms of initial student decision. For brand, you know, brand is something that you all own, right? We do online marketing in conjunction and under the umbrella of the EOU brand, but we don't create a brand plan for you. That's all yours. You guys own all of that. We just work under that brand. So brand is, to answer your question, is an important consideration for students when they're looking, prospective students when they're looking at going back to school. It's something that we look at in our team when we're working through launching new programs as an example. We would look into how is the brand positioned and then be able to capitalize upon that as much as we can, support that along the way. What's really important for us when we're looking at marketing and P, maybe if you want to skip forward to this integrated marketing piece, is really being able to connect to outcomes, to programs around the brand. And that, to go back to the earlier statement, students have an interest in the brand. It's registering in the three to five ranking for why they make a decision around a university. But they also have an interest in the programs. And so we're trying to look at what are the outcomes when we're meeting with you all and launching programs in the marketing and advertising space? How can we connect that to the brand and the outcome so that we're tackling kind of both those pieces at once? In terms of the EOU brand, it is something that we can do more brand analysis around. If that's something that the university would like to do in terms of a portion of a strategic plan and the look forward, and we can provide more brand insight there. We have active partnerships with Google and other companies in the digital marketing space that feed forward. I don't have a direct answer in terms of how that brand registers today, but we'd be happy to look at that.
Thank you.
Yep.
We're gonna do one, one more question, then we'll keep going down the presentation. This came from Tamara. What is the out of state percentage for online students that are enrolled at Eastern Oregon University?
That's a good question. I don't have that statistic. I can, I can follow up with that information. It's, again, it's, it's pretty high in terms of in states. But I don't want to quote something that I can look up with the team pretty easily, so I can get back to you on that information.
Okay.
I can share that our, our new transfers are only 22% from Eastern Oregon. So you bring in a lot of transfers. You're, you're a good engine for a transfer. So, so it could be obviously that they're all over the state, but just as a, a data point.
Yeah, I think about it, George, and I know you didn't ask that question, but you asked the question indirectly. I think about it in terms of, on this marketing chart here. I think we would really like to be able to put a fence around the state of Oregon and get much the same in like old school football recruitment pieces and get all the eyeballs that we can and have an interest, that have an interest in online education in the state of Oregon. Now, we might not have the right program, and that's where the, you know, talking to our recruitment team and the students that raise their hand and ask for interest. But I would like to see those impressions registering, right? I want to see somebody coming to EOU website or partner site and saying, I'm interested because I recognize the brand. And then from there, ex- expand that fence out, where we become more regional and we become, you know, looking into the contiguous states where the densely populated buckets. But we'll come back to the percent he can.
Yeah, I can find that.
Get that. I think Kelly's answer is a good one there in supporting that. To go back to your question, George, that you asked earlier, how we look forward and what it looks like for brick and mortar versus online students. You're good. Bless you. The, you know, the, the market has shifted considerably and students are looking at modality as a factor in their decision. I have a 15-year-old freshman who spent part of the time in COVID learning online. And so she's much more willing to take a look at online courses at high school and then as we look forward to college. But she's still, because she missed some of the, the connecting community pieces, she really is looking forward to being on campus. Now, for our, for the students that we support here and for the students that we support in most of our partnerships regionally, we're looking, we're not targeting the 18 to 24-year-old specifically, right? Those are brick and mortar students. They want to come to school here. That's great. You're doing outreach. You're doing recruitment in those areas. What we're looking more towards in terms of the online undergraduate student is we're looking at the adult learner who needs to finish their program. That's where we're building our marketing profile. That's why we're tied to outcomes. When we look forward in terms of what the actual market looks like, we know that it's going to continue to be a mix. But typically, we're not competing, competing against a student that wants to take classes online and a student that wants to take classes at a brick and mortar institution. Those are, those are decision points that have already been made for a student.
In fact, if you, and I'm happy to share, whether it's, I forget if it's this version of the, of Voice of the Online Learner or previous ones, we look at the statistics of students who say, when I'm looking for this program, I'm looking for it. They almost, they're choosing the modality first. They have to go online. Again, these are working adults in this profile, so, and, and we anticipate that this market will continue to grow.
In terms of the specific breakdown, we're happy to research more of that around EOU and provide that as a follow-up as well.
And, and I'm happy to share, Peter just ran an analysis of our own students that, you know, the average age of our, our off-campus, our online students is 33.9, whereas our on-campus average is 20. So it's, it's, it's a very different market.
That aligns with those percentages that we've seen here at Rise Point across the portfolio.
Does that help, George?
It does. You know, I'll just say with my next question again, and I'm, I'll move it. And it's one of those, and you haven't got to it. I mean, you have answered everything. So when we have students that are here, brick and mortar, and then they have to take it online. So let's just call them a hybrid student.
Okay.
What percentage goes to Rise Point? And what percentage goes to EOU when they're, I'll just, and they're taking most of their classes, brick and mortar, and then now they're taking these online?
Yeah, when they come in as an online student, they're, they're, yeah, they, they don't get a cut.
When they're coming as a brick and mortar.
Yeah.
Yeah, we only work with them online.
Yeah, we, we, we got them.
And, and I think it's, you know, if, if you're asking about what percentage of students wind up transferring and taking courses online? I mean, we know that happens. We've measured it with different partners historically to see, see how many students are making the jump to online from on-ground. We see that as relatively minor on undergrad. So we've seen it be at partners that are in the same bucket here, regional publics, be below 5% typically. But again, to Kelly's point, those are students that you recruited. So they're taking, they've changed the modality, but they're still a part of the recruitment from the EOU side.
And it's usually a short-term decision. It's a, it's a lifestyle situation. Something's happened. They do this and they, they usually will come back.
Yeah.
I know we're running short on time, so I'm gonna cover just.
I think Chair Vice Chiracrona has one more question.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't want to take up too much time. I, I, I'm interested in a marketing question because honestly, what you are doing for EOU with marketing is probably the thing that we could not do by ourselves. So that's hugely important. I'm, I'm just wondering how deep down you are able to do in marketing to really, we talked about our brand as a rural, regional university and, and, and our, the number of diversity of degree programs we offer. Any, in, what I'm, what I'm asking is, is how much information can students get when they first encounter EOU in terms of what their options actually are? And how, so how specific can you get to attract those students? Because I, I think we have a product that is really unique and special and better. So, so I, you know, in this highly competitive environment, how, how much can we go down to attract EOU-specific students?
So Christine, that's an excellent question. You've teed me up very well from what I was going to say on the slide. And so what you see here on the left hand of the slide is all the work that goes into marketing. Marketing in the digital age has become extremely nuanced. It's not the same as it was even five years ago, where I'm gonna put an ad on Google and that sounds good enough. What we've learned is that you need to reach students early and often, right? It is not good enough to have a singular strategy. So what you see on the left-hand side, I'm not gonna go through all of that mainly because I'm not on the marketing team. But that's all the work that goes into understanding the student behaviors, what they're looking for, and how can we best reach them? So that when we have that understanding of where we can reach them and, and what they're looking for, we can provide that media mix and all the strategies that we have on the right-hand side of the screen. Now, all of that, we won't be, our, our bread and butter, our evergreen, is really with the digital marketing space. That's where we do a lot of our investment. We know for a fact that's where students are starting their educational journey. They're going on that Google search bar and they're typing in the program or, or the, the career that they're interested in. So we know that we can reach students at that stage. So we invest a lot on the digital side. And what's good about the digital side is we can see that return on investment. So if something is not working, if it's not converting to applications, we, we can adjust as necessary. I will also say that, and this got brought up before, we also invest in, in field marketing. So we have two dedicated field reps that live in states that work really closely with your ROI centers. I know they work closely with Carrie and other folks to go out and do in-person events. They do in-person events at community colleges, other types of events, et cetera. So, so yeah, Christine, we, we get very deep in understanding of how can we best reach these students through all of the research that we do? Did that answer your question?
There, there's kind of two pieces. If we look at this digital marketing piece, right? There's, there's paid advertisement, which we know, but to Pete's point, we kind of know what we're getting from that. Deeper is really crafting the story with you all of who is the EOU student that is looking to go to school online, not under that digital marketing you see organic. That's where we spend a lot of time to develop what that profile really looks like. And students want to hear from students that have been successful. So we do a lot of testimonial build. We do faculty testimonials. And that's where students can get deeper in the marketing funnel to understand what is life like as an EOU student. Now, we feed back and forth there, right? So if a student is talking to us online and they say, well, I'm actually interested in going brick and mortar, then we'll hand that back off to you all. In terms of the depth of how much we can market and what it looks like, we have cascading sites that are built so that if a student expresses interest in, you know, a general MBA, then they can look at that and they can break it down and they can understand what is the specific courses and how does that look? And if they don't have the right program, then again, we can feed them back to, you know, traditional teams should we need to at EOU. And again, MBA is just an example. It's not a perfect example in that world. But we, we try to, that's part of the bridge for us in working hand in hand and really meeting the student where they need to be, right? And again, the focus of on student outcomes, if a student says, I, I need to be in front of somebody face to face on a daily basis, then we're gonna say, we understand that. Let's get you back over to the team on campus.
So if I, I'm thinking of, I live in John Day, which is south of here 140 miles. I'm thinking of a student in John Day who might be looking at a teacher, teacher education program, for example. And they come to EOU and they start having questions about how to do that. How, how quickly would they get handed off to somebody local?
Yeah, so if they express interest online and they go to one of the request for information pages, they would get over to our recruiting team and they would have a conversation. And then they would get handed over as quickly as we can turn that data back over if they said that's what we need. So usually there's a lag. I'm not 100% sure. It might be an email feedback. It might be something that is built into the data system. Typically, we have, the data that you have is the data that we have, especially on the student side. So on the pre-enrollment side, it's earlier, we get some of that information. I'm not 100% sure what the data feedback loop is there, but I would say within a day, if not sooner.
Correct. It's fast in terms of how we reach out to students who, again, initial their interest or if, if they're interested in a program that we do not manage for you all, we kick them over really quickly. 24 to 48 hours is, is our typical.
I would say faster, but it's only the speed of what, you know, we can really do.
It depends on, you know, if it's a Friday afternoon, you know, we, you know, it'll be different. But yeah, it's typically 24 to 48 hours.
Thank you very much.
I will also say real quick, because Christine, I don't know if this was embedded in your question, is that we work really closely with faculty. Nothing gets presented on our websites, on, on any digital marketing that we're doing without approval from the institution, right? We, we are not creating things in a vacuum. We're, we're researching and working with your all's teams here on campus with the program directors to understand what are the market differentiators from these programs? And we build in hopefully to have those questions answered for the students right away.
Five more minutes.
Yeah, I think Brad, did you have a question online?
Yes, hi, Brad here. Thank you, folks, for being here. And I remember when I was here when we got started with this and it's really worked out very nicely for us. The one question I have is I know that you also work with other institutions. And of course, there'd be some competition there. And we heard yesterday that, for instance, you work with Southern and on their masters in business administration. So how do you handle that when someone comes up and says, I'm kind of interested in this? How, how do you handle the competition between us and other, other schools?
So I'll let Silas answer some of it, but the initial thing to mention is that every partner that we work with, they get a plan. So, uh, I'll let Silas answer some of it, but the initial thing to mention is that every partner that we work with, they get a plan built in asylum. Right? We aren't sharing leads. We create the marketing plan from the ground up for Eastern Oregon and/or our other partners specifically. So there is no kind of. Consideration of where do these fall, right? We work with each of our partners individually. It's, uh. We, we really try to silo everything so that it, there's, there's no, I guess, cross pollutionation, right? Are all the folks that are dedicated Eastern Oregon are dedicated on working and improving, um, the growth of the institution.
Yeah, from, from a, uh, inquiry generation perspective, we, you know, we built the, the landing pages and. The only way a student would talk to both SOU and E O U is if they, uh, requested information independently. We don't share. Uh, inquiry list between partner institutions. It's all singular for that institution to Pete's point. So. When we talk to them, we're talking to them about. SOU, we're not talking to them about E O U. We're talking about what can we do to build the strategy independently with you? Does that answer your question, Brad?
Yes, thank you.
Trusty Hafner. Yeah, just a, a question, obviously. O P M, the business has been changing dramatically in, in recent time. I, I think at the first you mentioned two types of, of contracts. One is the revenue sharing contract and then the other is, was like a fee for service. Have you noticed a change in proportion of, of which kind of? Of contracts that universities are, are negotiating these days? Has there been a, a shift in that or just wondering?
Yeah, the, the shift has really been around partner economics. Um, on the fee for persistence side, on the revenue share model. It's really more tied to whether or not an institution can stomach capital. Uh, upfront costs associated with launching programs, associated with launching a new partner. And it's, it's quite expensive. Um, so we see more private schools have an interest in fee for service because they can bear it based off of, you know. Their existing alumni relationships and endowment, whatever they may have, uh, to be able to bear that cost of service on the front side. So that's where we see more of a shift than anything else. Um, for. Public schools, you know, frankly, they, there's, there's not a stomach or a financial budget in order to be as effective on that side. We also happen to think from a, you know, legacy perspective of where we find the most success. Are your successes, our success in a fee for persistence model. Uh, we're not tied directly to, we got to get this many leads. We have to get this many enrollments and. It's tied to the outcome of the student and that's what we're invested in. Um, and so, you know, that's. From, from a core kind of perspective and a mission, we believe that's a better fit. But it doesn't mean that it's not a fit for everyone.
Any final, any final?
I'm going to end on this. Yeah, I'm going to end on the slide, um, simply for time. And as Silas mentioned, you know, um, at the end of the day. Outcomes is what we're working towards, right? So we're entering here the fifth year of our partnership together. Um, we've partnered on twenty-six different programs. It's about to be twenty-seven when you all launch the online of ma- master of social work here in the fall. Um, and you can see the outcomes here, um, split up by college, but if you take it together, um, we've graduated, or I should say Eastern Oregon has graduated. Over a thousand students for the programs that we've worked together. Um, and as Silas mentioned, this, this is our goal at the end of the day. We want these students to persist through to graduation and. And that's what we're partnered with you all to do.
So I think, George, we have the slides will be shared with you all.
Yes.
Uh, we have a couple of follow-up questions that we'll, we'll run back through and we can feed that back through the contacts we have and, and send out to you guys. We, we really appreciate the time here. Uh, this, I think, having an open dialogue is really what we want. With all of our partners, but especially with E O U and to understand where you guys coming from, so that together we can sit in a room and say. What does success look like long-term? That's what we want to achieve. That's what we want to get to. We'd rather have more questions and more dialogue. And. Again, sorry, Margot, I'm long-winded. If you ask my wife, she would tell you that that's the case. Sometimes she's got to wrap it up, but, you know, we real. We, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here and do this. I think it's, uh, it's critical for our partnership moving forward and, you know, we're here the next couple of days. If there's other questions that you all have, please. Funnel them through. We're happy to continue the dialogue.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask this final question, then, then I'm done. Yeah, but, um. Why should we stay with you? Why should we remain partners with you? What are the top two or three reasons that you both have?
I, I think we as an organization. Are looking for a partner in this region like E O U that we can continue to lean into and make even more successful with. What we have from a marketing machine perspective and with an engaged partner, leadership group, board. To be able to map success for the long-term for the institution and do it together and have that conversation together. We have the capacity to scale and grow. And you guys have the expertise in the region and the engaged leadership to be able to maximize both sides so that we can sit here in five or 10 years and say. Remember when we looked at that slide, it was a thousand graduates. Now we're looking at. Multiply that by five. That's where we want to get to. And we believe that E O U represents that as. You know, potentially like a core flagship kind of partner for Rise Point as we move forward. This is the right kind of partner that we believe in and that we want to see succeed and tie it to the student outcomes.
George, I'm going to give you a, a, a touchy feely answer, which is, um. You know, I've worked here with Eastern Oregon for three odd years now. I wasn't here at the launch of the partnership, but. We've taken great pains to build the type of relationships that we have with the folks here on campus. Again, I had mentioned this earlier. We really feel like we work well from a teamwork perspective. Our, our team feels like an extension of the folks here. We really enjoy. Working with the folks here. We've built all these inroads to make sure that we're. Efficient from an operational perspective and having that all in place now with all the points that Silas had made means we can really map out the future success.
Thank you.
We've, we've laid the groundwork. We'd like to continue to really build on that and scale.
Okay, well, on behalf of our board, very thankful for, for you both coming here, Peter and Silas, and the, the relationship that we do have and. And I hope that our students, uh, more than anyone. Mutually, I'll just say gain in, in their opportunities. So thank you.
We agree with you on that. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your time.
All right, team, um, because we didn't have the break, we're, we're a little bit late. Um. Chris, let's give you at least ten minutes. Um, where you can help us orientate. Um, where we can find information on our board's webpage. So walk us through how we would find information, my friend.
Okay, thank you. Uh, for reasons I do not understand, I've been unable to log on to the Zoom. So I can't actually show you anything from this computer. I think, uh, Susan was trying to get me on this one, but I, are we up? Okay, uh, I may just do it from here. I'll do it from here. Okay. I don't actually have any of my things pulled up on this computer, so it's going to take a minute. I'm not responsible for not being able to go on the Zoom. Sorry. Okay. Okay, um. So, uh, I still don't have my material here. Let me, I, I'm so, here's, here's what we're going to do. I'm just going to take you through a few things here quickly. Yeah, uh, you can turn your mic on when you talk too. Okay, so, uh, as we say, this was, we started at the E O U landing page, um. The, uh, the, uh.
And Chris, the one I would want to see the most is, uh, the meeting summary notes, so that if we really did want to. And I know Chuck's working on it, but, or Chuck and, and Cedric are doing those summary notes, but I know that you have your own summary notes. And the big thing for me would be, I want to see where you put those.
Sure. Okay, so this is, uh, as I say, you go onto landing page, you type in the search bar board. And it takes you to the Board of Trustees webpage. Now there, uh, this doesn't scroll. Okay. Uh, there are, um. So this bar here is on all of the Board of Trustees pages and it takes you to the various places you need to go. So for instance, we've had this conversation about meeting summaries. Uh, if you recall at the board meeting this time last year, we amended board statement number one. To say that, uh, the videos of the meetings would be the official record, but that we would keep. Uh, we do two additional things. We would write a summary that was consistent with the way Rob, minutes were done in Robert's rules. Which is a listing of the topics discussed and any action items taken in the votes. And then we would also provide a transcript, uh, for the meeting. So we have been doing that since the start of last year. And where you find them is you go here to the live stream meetings and we've got a record of past meetings. For the committees as well as for the board. And if you click on a meeting, let's just say the. Finance Administration Committee meeting from January. Uh, you get the video. Oh, who's this fellow? Um, and, uh. There's two tools here that unfortunately are not easy to find, which is part of the reason we wanted to do this here. You have to go here or it says summaries and more. You click more. And it doesn't matter which committee, committing you've clicked on, you've got a written summary for each. And you've also got a transcript. So the summary works like this. Um, and it's put together by staff. I'll make this a little larger so it's easier to view. And, uh, it's, uh, it's. It basically has all the, all the details of the meeting other than trying to do a summary of the discussion. So we've got, you know, the call to order and the roll call results and, um. And the various activities that took place, um, and also where you can find it in the video. Here's a motion that was made, um, who made the motion, who seconded and what the vote was. And this, these summaries are put together by the staff who work closest with the committee. Um, now that's not all we've got. Sorry, I'll make this. Well, we've got more when it comes to that. Let me get this out of the way so I can see what I'm doing. Um. Back here at the video screen, you can also click show transcript. And when you click to, to transcript. Then a, uh, AI generated text of the meeting comes up. Now. This has the characteristics of AI generated text. It's guessing about pronunciations of some words and such, but, um. It's, uh, it, it gets you pretty well along and you can, particularly if you know, for instance, from looking at the agenda or the summary. Where the timestamp is, you can scroll ahead to that timestamp. And. Here we go. We'll start with welcome again. Uh, and you could just go straight to that conversation. Um, I don't know how this will play over Zoom, uh, probably. Yeah, so, and, uh. As it goes, it'll track the conversation on the, um, on the text. So let's. We come down here. Yeah, this is presentation. We've got the sound off, I think, on this, but that's how that works. So that's how, that's basically how we've been putting together meetings, so the information about past meetings. Um. If you'd like, I can stop there and, and we can get on to our next agenda topic. There are quite a few other things in the cover sheet that I put. Uh, I gave a little quiz for you guys to try to figure out your own, figure out where it was. Uh, we can review this at that at another meeting. Uh, there's nothing particularly crucial about the timing on that. Is that sufficient, Chair?
I think if we play, play with your cover sheet, that'll probably be a good thing for us to.
Okay.
To get to do that.
Mr. Chair, I have just one question. Chris, when Cedric and I did the summary, that summary was not up. When? When are staff summaries being posted?
Well, uh, we've had some turnover in the staff during the work, uh, i- i- in my office. So there have been some hitches in the giddy up. Uh, this time it got posted. Was it Monday? We got these up.
Okay. Yeah. So, so yeah, that, the, just, yeah, I don't belabor this, but, um. Cedric is, is, um, during the meeting, he is taking his notes, so he can turn that around. Pretty fast. That's number one. Number two, um, I think there's value in, in the board perspective of, of the summary. I think a good solution is going, if I do say so myself, is to have, uh, the vice chair work with staff to develop a. A joint document. So, um, I, I, I like the idea of having some board input into that, into that summary. So. So yeah, I appreciate those summaries very well, but, uh, very much, but, uh, you know, sometimes we have such quick turnaround. Between committee meetings and the board meetings that it's, it's a little bit tough. They have lots to do too. So. So, uh, I rate Cedric pretty hard on it.
So I, I do want to push back a little on that, actually. We, until January of last year, we kept minutes of everything. And under Oregon State law, minutes are more than what Robert's rules would have. You have to have a summary of the conversation. We intentionally decided not to do that anymore, uh, so, uh, that the minutes would just be basically. Just a factual archive of the votes and, and the, the procedural things. Um. Is there enough content, discretion in the content there that you actually need someone other than just a staff person to put that together?
So that's not a pushback at all. Um, you know, you and I agree on this a lot. The, the issue is I've heard from board members that they. Appreciate a, a, a board component to the summary. That's all. So I, I. But I was fully in support of, of, of this change. I continue to support it. Um, and make, I'm just talking about maybe a little tweak, that's all.
And, and I would just share, uh, from, from the president's perspective, I just want to share, I'm completely okay. I find your notes interesting. I, I was just saying, so, so I, I think they are not the official minutes, right? I think as long as we have a shared understanding that they're not the official minutes. I have found them helpful and useful. So I would say keep moving if you're enjoying that personally. Um, I don't think there's any harm in it.
Yeah, we could, so, I mean, uh, the staff you would be working with would be Jordan. So, uh. He doesn't answer me, but, uh, that, I'm sure that can be worked out easily.
Yeah, I think, uh. You know, when we had that discussion, um, going back to those, I was, I was on the side where I do like more traditional minutes. So there is going to be some. Possible bias on my end, just in, in terms of that conversation, but also. Um, that aside with the way that we're currently doing it, you know, just, just as the room, um. We've talked about where we, you know, some people, we may have reviewed the minutes, but. There was gaps in what some of the conversation was. And yeah, um, you know, on one hand, we could say, you know, if someone wants to know, they should. Spend the time preparing for the meeting, go into the video, go at the timestamps. But that's not always going to happen, I think, with everyone, some, some of the work schedules that folks got. So. I think that's very helpful to be able to dive into, but having something that's a quick reference, like, okay. These were the main concerns that were brought up during this particular hot topic section that's going to. these were the main concerns that were brought up during this particular hot topic section that's gonna hit the board meeting. I think it just provides that little quicker board perspective overview.
If I may, I almost prefer that the separation between the unofficial, which, what you're doing, and the official, just because it helps our staff get the work that's required by the state, but it also preserves your voice in a different way. And again, I think it's actually quite helpful what you're doing, and I'm supportive of it. If we could have that little line of distinction between the two, I think it helps us.
Plus, I have to keep him busy. I mean, he's got that great title of vice chair, so it doesn't come just willy-goly.
I agree. I just asked him to do some exercise with me in an upcoming weekend, so we're gonna keep him real busy.
Mr. Chair, for me. So it sounds like we're kind of getting away from the point of amending board statement number one last year, right? Where the goal was to reduce staff workload. And I think it's really great that we have the concept of having the vice chair develop our board's perspective of how those committee meetings are going. But I guess I'm concerned about how that works out between committees, right? So if this is just a working norm versus if we have to enshrine this in the bylaws. Because say, let's say, the vice chair of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee is like, oh, well, I didn't really want to do it because it's not required of us. So we would just get into more issues there.
I'll just say this, and I'm sometimes, from my perspective, the meeting notes are the meeting notes that are, are given by the staff. And when we're doing extra, I think if you have time, you know, those are things that are nice. I don't feel bad about it, but forcing others to have to do it would be something where I would say it should be voluntary that you're doing it that way. And ultimately, if I had to pick a way, I wouldn't mind, like, the the board, or not the board, the, the office of the work, the administration does the meeting notes, and then potentially the chair of the vice chair reviews them and gives any input, and then they get posted. So that there's, it's more of a cohesive process. But, but either way, for me, I'm pretty much fine. I just want us to make sure that we can find the information, if we're looking for the information, so that we can have it. And having it, I'll just call it an additional process, I probably don't mind, as long as it's voluntary. And then I don't like things muddied. So that's another thing for me, that when you have things kind of muddied, you're like, what are we doing? But, but I can live in that space too.
This is a, think of this as a pilot. This, you know, in another couple of meetings, we might say, this, this stinks, or we might say, this is, this is great. This is just, this is the pilot for one committee to see if it's something that the board feels is helpful. If the board says, forget this, it goes in the trash can, so that's all.
Yeah, just, just wanted to reiterate that, that it's purely experiential in response to conversations we've had as a larger board. And so just wanted to try it out. I can, for the record, Chuck isn't forcing me. So I, I, you bear, you bear witness that this is voluntary. And, and so I think I was kind of going through it, and you know, Chuck had mentioned, not to quote him, but had mentioned in previous meetings that if other committees ended up wanting to pick this up, cool. If not, cool. It's just something that we discussed that we want to try on the finance committee, being that that tends to be one that has some pretty, pretty aggressive topics at times. So, you know, we just want to try it out, and yeah, it'll either get thrown out or the board finds value. And Chris finds value, and everyone finds value, or they don't, and we have those conversations then.
I think, thank you, and I think we can live in that place for a while. Okay, are we ready to move on? All right, team. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the report and update from our 2024 on our strategic plan and the annual report that we have. So we're gonna get into the annual report as well as the strategic plan implementation of our, of, of the work that's taking place. President Ryan will be doing the presentation. So President Ryan, please proceed, and it looks like he has Peter and Mrs. Rockefeller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm multitasking. So thank you for, for allowing me some time. We won't get through all of this today, and George, I'm asking you to cut me off when, when you need to move on to the next item. But just wanted to share with you some updates on our strategic plan and the strategies that we have undertaken to meet those goals. And I'm really proud of what I have to share with you today. We have made a lot of progress on those strategies. And for your information on page 20 of the annual report that you received yesterday, you can see progress on some of the KPIs that currently exist. For the most part today, I'm gonna focus on our workaround strategies. Happy to revisit with you or take some Q and A about specific numbers. But I wanted to just really share with you that we're in year one of our Ascent 29 strategies, which are intended to boost those numbers. And so just sharing with you some of the pilots that we've been running, some of the committees that have been active. And I've got a couple of VPs up here with me. If you'll recall, we created committees last year that collaboratively designed some of the strategies that were to help push those numbers forward. We really needed to get some tactics in place if we were actually to move those numbers. So we had four strategy teams, and we built strategies around their goals. One of the first that we laid out for student success was to revisit and rebuild a robust mentoring system. And I'm really pleased to share that for Tressa Seidel was given this and the next task, really in, in short order. Nevertheless, really stepped up and built, as you heard in the Student Affairs and Academic Affairs Committee meeting, a pilot program that started in the fall that is now continuing in the winter term, that is designed really three to four mentors for students. That includes those who are already their support systems, like advisors, but also 24 volunteers throughout the campus to partake in this program. At this point, we're gonna need both more volunteers and more students that will work on in the future. These are for new freshmen and transfers. And, you know, over the course of the four years that we're gonna work on building this out, we want to reach eventually all of our students. So we're hopeful that alumni, board, a whole bunch of other folks will take part in this as well. Our next goal was to pilot a Mountaineer Information Center, which is where you had some coffee and snacks this morning. And we began that, our first day was in Welcome Week. We've had over 100 visitors to that center. There's just always someone with a big old smile there to greet students. It's very often a fellow student. The students who arrive at the Mountaineer Information Center most often have questions in two areas, financially and student services. And so they do a good job moving people to where they need to go. And we're hopeful that over time, the Mountaineer Information Center will be more and more able to answer a lot of the questions that students have. We're also working on increasing student engagement. And a lot of this work actually builds out a new communication journey, which VP Rockefeller is currently undertaking. But one of the other efforts that we have undertaken this term, last term, is piloting an early alert system. In fall 2024, we had 268 alerts, about 181 unique students. Eighty-four of our faculty and staff were the ones who triggered, triggered these alerts. And those alerts were triaged by a group of individuals, including student guides and advisors, to try and meet students' needs early as possible. We need to have more interventionist strategies in real time. We've been working a lot on our enrollment pipeline. I believe I've shared with you in the past that we now have three pilot directed admissions agreements with three Eastern Oregon high schools. That includes La Grande, our first agreement. Fortunately, we had someone in place to help with that, Griswold and Umatilla. Part of our KPIs are actually to increase local high school engagement. At the state level right now, they're currently discussing direct admissions agreements to the benefit of community colleges that those individuals with 2.0 and above as students would be able to directly go to community college and hopefully receive the financial support they need. It's really important we get our names in there as well. So these are early efforts to help us meet that. I'd also like to point out, as noted on page 20, that your on-campus students have increased, and our local high schools, another KPI, those numbers have increased for EOU. We also are running an admissions standards committee that's deliberating about what does a 2.75 mean? What, so they've been working since, I want to say, September, October last year. They're due to deliver a report to me on what admission standards they think work best for the university. We also, as you heard yesterday, have general education deliberations ongoing. There is a KPI around transfer student credit and how those credits are, are serving. And part of the general education committee deliberations can help us solve some of these issues. We're also working on the admitted-to-matriculated gap. That is, those students we admit to the university, but gosh darn it, they just, they don't attend. So we're trying to find ways to make this a more successful product, process. In the last 10 years, and I'm happy to share some data with you if you have questions, yield rates at universities have precipitously declined. And so we're working on trying to bring our yield rates up again. And one of the new, and I will say, very difficult processes we've undertaken is to try and register our new students earlier. To the credit of Provost Peter Geisinger, he's been working to build a schedule for students that allows them to register a year out. I will share, it was Rise Point that gave us this idea. It's a way to make sure that students are enrolled and will be sticky, that they'll keep staying at the university. So this particular effort, one that reduces the time of new students by two months to register for classes here, wasn't easy. You may think, oh, gosh, what does it matter, two months? Well, we had to get schedules a lot earlier than we needed to. And that means trying to build stable staffing. That means deans shifting their timetable. So this was incredibly meticulous work, and it'll be interesting to see early data on what that looks like. We also have our Transfer Advisory Council working on matriculation gaps. They've mapped out the journey of our students from their campus of origin to the university. And they too have found that this gap is one that they want to work on. As you know, I'm also concerned about those transfer credit issues, which I suspect will be part two of that journey. But early, early information there is that they're working a little bit more closely with advisors. Third, we have a new kind of re-enrollment focus that has emerged over the course of, really just this academic year. You heard from EAB, some of you who are in the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, that re-enrollment is really an area of opportunity for us. And I obviously could have put this on my next slide, as you'll soon see. But we're really thinking about establishing re-enrollment, that first-term stop-out of students as part of our overall advising caseload as, as we rejigger those units. As you learned in that session, when students stop out for one term, once they get past that, they're unlikely to come back. And so we're really kind of taking a moment to dig into that. And I'll share one more slide before I give you a minute, because I do realize that I'm driving this truck really fast down the road to try and get you to where you need to be. We're also looking at new markets for recruitment. The first, as you're well aware of, is our prison education proposal, which is currently at NWC C U. And we are also going to be on February 18th, looking for funding for that at the House Higher Education Committee. That same day, another effort will be heard, and that is trying to find some dollars for our Early College Initiatives Program. That's the program that works very closely with rural communities throughout the state, not just in Eastern Oregon. Building up ideas about what does your future look like? What kinds of careers would you be interested in undertaking? This has been supported by a federal grant, but that money is drying up, and we believe that it serves a state interest, and so we're looking for support for that program. I would be a very bad president if I didn't stop right now and allow you to ask some questions. There's other stuff, but I know, I know we're a little behind, so I want to just give you a moment.
Anyone? And don't sell yourself short. You're a tremendous president. And then you can continue.
Kelly, I have a quick question. Can you name, without lots of explanation, for time, other new markets, as you have identified them so far? When you say go develop new markets, what, can you name one, two, three? We, 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 we heard about the prison, we heard about something, but something else that developed recently that excited you about under that new markets?
Yeah, so we currently have Beanie Moses Mosebed and Provost Peter Geisinger behind me. They're actually working on strengthening our relationship with our Islander community. So building direct admissions and additional pipelines for students. We've been discussing the business program as well as the mental health programs.
Thank you.
One, one more, I don't know how much work it has been in terms of increasing enrollment, but you have more direct admissions with our high schools now, and it's not just La Grande, but I think you have at least four or five. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. I, I didn't want to repeat something I had said earlier, but, but certainly, yes. We do have some, some early data on the direct admissions programming.
We have about, we have 30 fully admitted students now, among all the schools, La Grande being by far the most. So that's really exciting. I can also report that the average GPA is, not, GPAs are usually above 2.75. Some, some are below, but which gives us an early indication, you know, and how we work with these students when they come in and what kind of support they need.
I love it. Trustee Kiku.
Yeah, so I'm looking at page 20, the ascent by the numbers. And I wanted to talk about the meaningful student-faculty interactions. And then I saw in the five-year trend that it took a huge dip. And it's still like getting, looks like it's still like rising slowly, but yeah, I just wanted to talk about that. Like, is there a reason for? Yeah, meaningful student-faculty interactions on page 20.
Yeah, that's a concerning trend, I think. We, part of it might be that post-pandemic expectations have changed on students, how they would like to interact with faculty. You know, it used to be perfectly defined to have the in-class interaction. Right now, it's more remote, you know, at different times, expectations have raised. We certainly continually encourage our faculty to interact with students. We hope that the changing in, in our advising structure gives faculty more time for mentoring, for that professional and career mentoring, you know, that, that really can be very specific to a student's needs. So the, the programs are currently now, I've been asked to work on how they would run their professional and career mentoring. Yeah, and feed that in there. So again, that was one of the, one of the driving forces of, of the advising restructure to allow faculty that extra engagement.
And if I may, seeing the, the piece that, that drew your eye, I, I want to point out that, that, that top line would have been taking us back, you know, four to five years. That, that's a pandemic dip that you see there, that, that particular drop. And as you can see, the line has been improving since then. There's obviously, you know, re-engagement after the pandemic. I think it's taken both students and faculty a little bit more time because of those COVID experiences. But yeah, that huge gap there, that, that's, you're seeing, that's, that's definitely COVID.
Beanie?
Please.
Beanie Moses?
Just quickly, I wanted to also add that the work that we're doing in Title III. So there are a lot of good, meaningful faculty-student interactions, but some of the work that Peter and his team were doing is documenting that process. So there are some of those things occurring on campus, but there's a lot of work, as you saw from Rory's But there's a lot of work, as you saw from Rory's presentation yesterday, and that website that they've built. Some of those things are part of the Title III work around providing opportunities for more, what is the word I'm looking for? For more transparency about what they are, how do we record them in a way that allows us to know that they're present, allows students to know how they're engaging in those activities, and then how we document them for the campus as well as for how we look at our community and partnership works. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Question, Mr. Chair. On the directed, directed missions portion of that, I know my understanding with Salem's approach has been very heavily focused on supporting community colleges and getting people into community colleges. I know we, we partner a lot with our local community colleges, BMCC, TBCC.
Yeah.
What, is there any efforts that we can make in maybe targeting some directed, directed missions into those programs and building out partnerships there?
Yeah, we actually do have directed missions agreements already existing with those community colleges and several others.
Love it. Thank you.
Sure thing. All right, I'll keep moving. All right, so, next slide. So the other piece that we've run into is the EOU website. It's time for a pretty big refresh. And we have just completed the RFP process and, and chosen a consultant. And so we'll be able to move forward. This process actually also takes a look at our brand as well. So that's going to be good movement for us. We've also been working a lot around issues of university welfare and campus life. One of the, one of the really great pieces of work that's been undertaken this year is we have an onboarding committee that's been established. And they brought to us some really great suggestions about thinking about our employees holistically from the moment of hire and creating and building a little bit more pride in the university. And so their plan includes things like having a cohort experience, a buddy system, a focus on, on team EOU, and even having a canvas shell, which can be helpful for those, for those individuals who are hired that come from another community to help give them some resources. The other things we've been doing is, as you heard yesterday, some listening sessions about performance appraisals, kind of again, thinking about the employee a little bit more holistically. We've also been working on our recognition programming. I didn't mention here some of the new things we started last year in terms of staff appreciation events. But I have developed just this year a monetary reward for individuals who are chosen by their colleagues to be distinguished faculty AP, I always accidentally put APEC instead of AP, and, and classified staff. So they've had awards for quite some time, but they were more pats on the back than, than an actual reward. We're also, if you may recall from the stairs, walking up over by that office, we're actually, we've, we've chosen that wall to kind of commemorate the longer-term choices of the university. So Ms. Kimberly Newman is, is working on creating, you know, some boards that'll list all the employees who have been under those categories so that, you know, they have a place at this university for, for time immemorial where they will be remembered for their excellent service to the university. We've also been working on fostering a, a, a culture of civility and support at the university. You've heard about the civility campaign that's been established. I can't recall if I've shared with you the President's Commission on Student Success and Belonging. Those students who have been part of that commission were actually at the reception last night. And I do hope to bring them back to y'all so you can get to meet them. They've really undertaken some, some pretty neat work this year. And they're currently in the process of surveying students and harassing them on the quad to just kind of talk about the issues and how the university can do a better job serving them. We have really taken the Great Colleges to Workforce Survey quite seriously. We have a, a list, and I'm happy to share this with you at another time. We have a, a list of, of topics that we've been addressing as well as really responsive programming to what our colleagues at the university have shared our urgent needs. And at our February university update, which includes all of our faculty and staff, should they choose to attend, they'll get to hear about some of those efforts. We've also been working on our fiscal sustainability. One of the programs I wanted to highlight here is the Academic Master Plan, which Provost Geisinger has been working on. He's formed a steering committee, he's gathered data, and he's developing two subcommittees to bring in even more input from our community on the efforts that he's undertaking. We are, you know, working on getting that executive director hired to help us work on donor relationships. You know, the, the slow process in gathering that individual is important for us to remember as we think about things like our OPM and, and other aspects of work here. It's really important that we have people in-house to do the work. We also have this new partnership with Wenzhou. Provost Peter and I work on that together. And we also, and this actually could have been an, an answer to Mauricio's question earlier as well. I've been working with the other trues and PSU on a re-enrollment campaign that would be statewide. I'm the point president on that work, and I partner with PSU on it. We're meeting with REUP soon. And this is an opportunity for us to perhaps work together or with a consultant to reach out to the hundred thousand individuals in Oregon who have some college credit but no degree.
Can you just remind me, Wenzhou University Partnership, what exactly is that partnership?
Yeah, so that's a Taiwanese university that we're currently working on. Our current effort is to work on a study abroad program for, for our students. Our longer-term goals are working on degree completion programs. So they would do like two years or three years in Wenzhou and then finish up at EOU or one of our partner universities in the state. A lot of work on our tuition model. VP Leanne Case has, is currently starting her roadshow to think about the, the tuition for next year. But we're also engaged in some longer-term thinking. In the short term, I would share with you that the Retention Grants Committee was able to extend thirty-six thousand dollars to thirteen separate students, which ultimately led to fifty thousand dollars in tuition at EOU. I do want to have a point of clarification about where those monies come from. Those monies came from the true PSU dollars, not from our existing donors. There are crisis funds, as VP Seidel shared with you, but those are not being used at present. It is a goal of mine and ours to, of course, be able to rely on donors for those funds. But at present, we do not, we do not use those monies from donors. I'm quite hopeful that we'll be able to attract donors to this program because the bottom line of it is pretty impressive. If we are able to graduate more students who are in, you know, financially exigent circumstances, we will also increase our state monies over time. So it's not only the enrollment dollars, but it also could lead to better performance funding. And of course, we continue to pursue campus efficiencies. And, and every time I see this on the, the strategies, I actually have a lot of pride in this institution because our own faculty and staff asked us to continue pursuing efficiencies. So that, that's really a testament to the community here that they want to see us be long-term successful. And so we're, we're playing in the sandbox a little bit more often. Of course, we've had to do that over the last year in terms of serving the board as well. But we have a new position that's shared between athletics and facilities. VP Case has managed to find us some savings by reducing some of our software contracts. And of course, we are working in the coming year on some of our processes to make them less burdensome and perhaps less costly. That, my fellow trustee, is my report to you.
It doesn't seem like you've done anything. You, you guys are doing a lot. I'll just, let's, let's go. Any questions? You have any questions from the board?
I, I don't have the question. This is Mauricio's statement. Thank you. I love the report. Great information, a lot of exciting development. And I really appreciate the energies, and it looks like no matter what happens on campus or in Oregon, there is a picture of you there. Thank you, Kelly.
All right, Vice Chair.
Yeah, I just, I, I just kind of want to echo that. I, you know, it's going to take me a while to digest this report. And also, I wish I, there was, I'll have to review the video of Dr. Ryan's presentation because I, it, it went by too fast in my head, but it was really excellent. I, what I, what I just want to comment on is some major challenges that have been faced and are, we are continuing to face. And I feel very grateful that you are at the head of our institution and that you've assimilated such a capable staff and that you're really taking things realistically and to heart and that you are working to try to bring us to where we need to go. And, and major work has been done, you know, I'll, I'll just pull one out. The Major Colleges to Workforce Survey, the work that's been done to improve the climate here at the university has been immense. And so I, you know, that's just one tiny little piece. But I just want to thank you and all of, all of the people here in this room, the staff, who have been part of that and those who aren't here. As a trustee, I just am very grateful and proud to be part of this. So thank you.
Molly, is there anything that you would like to say?
I mean, I think something we talked about, and it's, it's in the Great Colleges to Workforce Survey. And, you know, how is EOU special? And so what I'd like to share, and what I've shared in a few other spaces, is having come here just seven months ago, I feel an immense amount of connection and, and sort of that special energy. And that momentum is really building. So I think we can, we will continue to see those improvements in numbers and faculty and student engagement and sort of all of that work. I think all of this work is culminating into sort of those improvements and connections. But I do really see that specialness, just in the students that we serve, the community that we're in, and even just in these spaces, the conversations that we get to have. So that's me. That's what I'm going to add.
Thank you. Dr. Geisinger.
Yeah, I want to echo that. It certainly is a special place, asking for me personally. I think it, it really is. And I want to emphasize really the collaborations we have had across divisions, you know, all pulling in the same direction. Not only is that what we need to do, it also makes it fun really to come up with things. And, and also learning about how other divisions work, how other offices work is terribly enriching. So benefits all around.
Right, Timo, I'm going to, I'm going to move us on. I would just say this to, I, I told this to Kelly the other day, that to me, a lot of things that I see have her, I'll just say, have, have her fingerprints on them and that I, I noticed that, and how people work together, how people talk, or how people are taking actions for improvement. And again, this report is one of those that, to me, highlights a lot of good things taking place, a lot of action, a lot of activity. And it's, it's a lot of work to, to make an institution become better, and I'm really thankful for you. Okay, we're going to move to the last section, which is the President's Contract. This is an action item. Well, we're going to discuss some changes in her contract. We've now come to the final agenda item in our meeting, the renewal of the Board's Contract of Employment with President Ryan. President Ryan's current contract is for three years. And that was from July twenty twenty-three to June twenty twenty-six. However, her current contract says that halfway through the contract term, the President and I must attempt to negotiate her next contract. If successful, that new contract would take effect July first of this year, superseding the final year of her contract, of her current contract. Starting in December twenty twenty-four, I began the negotiations process with the President. Those negotiations resulted in a proposed contract before you today. In that work, I was assisted by outside counsel Craig Ashford of Miller Nash. Is Craig going to be here?
He's on the Zoom.
There he is. Okay. Craig will assist me today in presenting the contract for your consideration. I heartily recommend, I heartedly recommend that the Board approve this new contract with President Ryan. Craig, will you please provide the Board with an overview of the differences between the current contract and this new one?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Hello. My name's, as Chair Mendoza said, my name is Craig Ashford. I am with the law firm Miller Nash out of Portland. I've been working with the public universities either as an in-house attorney or as external counsel for over a decade at this point, including especially working on items related to executive compensation just like this. In this particular circumstance, as Chair Mendoza mentioned, the current contract calls for a renegotiation about midway through and that the negotiation be completed by the end of the fiscal year. And we believe we've reached an agreement that we can recommend to you. And it differs from the current contract in the following ways. You'll see this in the Board materials. If it helps, I can also go ahead and bring that up so that you can see it as well. Give me just one moment.
It's on the second page of the cover sheet.
Indeed. There you are. So first, in length, the initial contract was for three years. This current proposed contract would be for five years. The goal is-
Could you make that just a little bit larger?
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
How's that?
Great. Better. Thank you.
So now that President Ryan has demonstrated that she can do a wonderful job for Eastern Oregon, the goal is to make sure that we demonstrate the appreciation and also keep her without tying the university's hands for massive amounts of time. And so we have proposed a, a five-year contract. In addition, we've added two items of compensation for President Ryan. The first is a retention incentive that she'd get as a bonus at the end of each fiscal year. The first, I want to make sure that I show you specifically that the first retention incentive would occur in the current fiscal year on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And then there would be a subsequent increasing retention incentive on June thirtieth of each fiscal year that President Ryan remains President of the university. In addition, we've added an element of deferred compensation. She would not get a deferred compensation payment in the current fiscal year. But then, starting with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year, every year she would receive an additional payment that's intended to be added into deferred compensation arrangements for her benefit upon retirement. These payments together, the retention incentives and the deferred compensation incentive, are intended to help make her compensation more competitive within the comparator environment of other universities in the area and in the state to recognize the fine work that President Ryan has done. I'll quickly mention that the deferred compensation, if you end up looking through the contract that we have provided with the agenda materials and whatnot, the deferred compensation is labeled within the contract as being additional compensation because it is money that is also like the retention- The retention incentive, it's earned on June 30 at the end of each fiscal year. And then the president may elect to have that money contributed to a deferred compensation arrangement, either the Oregon Savings Growth Plan or the Tax-deferred Investment Plan that is hosted for public universities and for the state. And so then, using that mechanism, she can defer it at her election in each year. Then, in addition, we've removed portions from her contract that were really only relevant to the first year of employment or when she was initially transitioning to employment. So items related to relocation expenses, items related to consideration of her application for tenure and so on have been removed because those are no longer relevant at this point. That's been all taken care of. And then, in addition, we've clarified and streamlined portions related to her participation in outside activities. We wanted to make sure that President Ryan was assured that she would have the opportunity to engage in speaking arrangements or participating in professional organizations, doing research as she wanted and so on. The prior agreement made it a little less clear as to when and how those outside activities could be approved by the board or on what basis could that be denied? And so in this circumstance, what we've done is we've added a provision that would make clear that the university will really only deny a request to participate in outside activities. It really just burnish the university's reputation anyways. That it will only deny that request in circumstances where it either substantially interferes with the president's duties to the university or if the activities don't comport with EOU's mission as a public university. And then finally, you can see in a red line that I think has been provided with the materials for the board meeting that there is a, there's a red line that shows changes from her prior contract to this new proposed contract. And you'll see a number of other items, words, little changes and sentences and things like that that have no substantive change. They just modernize the style and in the manner in which the contract is drafted. Otherwise, beyond these items here, the contract remains the same as what was approved when she was appointed as president initially in 2023.
One more thing that I think, thank you, Craig. We'll chat a little bit more. One more thing that I know I included in the her contract was if she was, as long as her evaluations are satisfactory, was another condition of when we would approve or not approve outside, outside committees or outside work. If her evaluations were poor, those are reasons for us to to say we need her to focus on other things. Is that accurate, Craig?
That is accurate. It does say that.
Any questions?
I do have a question. This is Mauricio for clarity. Thank you, Craig. Much appreciated. And thank you, George, for working on this. Are there components that are not listed here that actually align Presidents Kelly with the collective bargaining agreement? I mean, we have so what other things are in her contract, the new contract? They also happen for other employees at EOU?
Craig, may I field that one?
Go ahead.
So you'll note the cover sheet says that this doesn't affect what we say in Board Statement Number Seven on board on the evaluation of the president. And the final section of that board statement talks about the process we've had both with the prior president and this one where on an annual basis, once her evaluation is over, there's a discussion of changes to her compensation. So for instance, in November, this board approved a increase in the president's salary based on cost of living adjustment. It was the same cost of living adjustment that administrative professional employees at the university got. So that system is unaffected by this. So she continues to be eligible for cost of living increase as well as that section of Board Statement Number Seven talks about eligibility for one-time bonuses based on goal attainment or also on achieving other good results for the university. Now, those are discretionary, unlike this, which are contractual. And those are based on essentially her performance evaluation. So she would still be entitled to those. That doesn't change. But and so this is essentially, this is there are two components to this, the financial part. I'll mention the third. Her stipends don't change. Those are the same as they were in the original contract. But there's a an element here to basically say, and 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 George, I'm sort of speaking for you now, but that we want to keep her. And so that's the retention bonus. You stayed another year. You're gonna get a chunk. And also the deferred comp is really another reflection of that. That's as far as I'll go and sort of speaking for you, Chair Mendoza. But perhaps you might just talk about your approach to the negotiations on what your goals were with that.
Well, I'll just say real quick to everyone. I knew and we're aware that she gets the same types of healthcare benefits that the I'll just say that the administrative professionals receive. And the cost of living again was to keep her the same with the whatever administrative professionals receive. And then the the bonus was really the the same teacher bonus, professor bonus that happened with the additional credit hours that were brought in, student credit hours. And then that's, those are the things that we would discuss each time, each year for her. And then the new things was really, I wanted her to stay. I think we have a really good president. I use those eight, nine, 10s. We have an eight, nine, 10. I wanted her to be as competitive as we could be with with the trues in our region. She's still second to last in terms of compensation with those in our that are comparators. So giving her some additional resources to me is is important for for us showing our commitment to her. And I would I would just say for from for me that there were certain contract wordings that she didn't necessarily like. And I wanted to make sure that we put it in a way that was more positive or or affirming of her, which I tried to do through through Craig as well with the work that and just align to law, align to the things that we have to follow in terms of law. Craig did a great job of helping me with that. And I wanted us to to show her how much we valued her with with the the additional annuity for her too. So and it went, it went very well. She was great to work with. We probably had four to five meetings to go back and forth with things. And then Craig would support, Chris would support at some level. Chris did stay out of the process as much as he could per conflict of interest or to not put himself in any situation. So Craig did a great job of going back and forth with me and and Kelly did a great job of going back and forth with me. Trustee Reel?
Yeah, I just wanted to say too, when I was first looking over the contract, you know, I had some questions around personally around some of the retention numbers and, you know, but to reiterate, your point, Chair, you know, having a good person and keeping them around. I mean, I was here when we went through a lot of us were, but the search process, you know, that comes with a lot of levels of expense. University of presidents, you know, the trends are that a good portion of them are lasting fewer than five years. That has a lot of costs. There's a lot of discontinuity when you have interims and do searches. So there's a lot of different costs associated with that and not even to mention opportunity costs and everything that goes into that. So, you know, and that consideration, you know, and thinking through that, like to me, made a lot more sense. Want to keep someone that has that is showing results and has shown results in their short time here. And you know, just, just wanted to put that, put that out there to, you know, if the if, I don't know if to anyone else, if anyone else had that reaction, but you know, that's something that I was considering and want everyone to consider as well.
Trustee Gigan?
Thank you, Chairman Doza. And thank you for working on this. I just have a question, kind of what you were talking about. If you can pull up that document we were looking at when you were showing the addendums that have been made to the new contract.
Will do.
Specifically on the retention piece? Just look at that for a second. All right, retention. Notice that it is doubling every year, 5,000, 10,000, 15, 20, 25, and 30. And and this is just one other piece. The deferred compensation is in another addendum to the contract. So my question is from a, you know, public university, that retention incentive, how it doubles like that by 10, 50, 20, 25, 30? Can you explain to me how or to us how a public university feels in doubling something like that is in step with a collaborative bargaining agreement in a public university?
I don't, I wouldn't say, you know, in step. She's, she's not like every employee. Sometimes I tell people, you know, she's a wolf, you know, she's not, she's not like everyone else. You only have one university president. And they often do get retention incentives. And they also do get deferred compensation. And for us to be able to to have her or to maintain stability does mean that you have to look at other things. And I would just say the $5,000 relative to finding somebody else that might take us $50,000 is a, it's a small investment. And and they need even doubling it. I I look at these things as like, it's worth it to pay these types of small amounts to to keep somebody to be here.
I'll just, just because you mentioned a number there in terms of search expense, just the contract for a search firm would be more than $130,000, not counting the whatever expense there is for an interim and that sort of thing.
And I think the, anyway, back to okay, we'll, we'll go with Craig and we'll go with Chuck. But again, the minute I think everybody starts thinking that that she's just like everyone else, that to me is usually like, she's not just like everyone else. She's the president. But she needs to love and support everyone. And the stability of our university really does have like, if you don't have a very good leader or very strong leader, things are going to crumble quite a bit. And you need to make sure that you are looking out for that person. And honestly, boards should look out for their presidents versus not looking out for them. Craig?
So if I may, and it's an excellent question because on the one hand, as as Chair Mendoza points out, she's the president and and the president is different. On the other hand, she works within the context of a university with a lot of employees who are constrained to to certain limitations that they have financially and and an environment that is what it is right now financially. Let me point out a couple of things that I think may help add some context to the the question posed. First of all, you're spot on that it doubles from the first fiscal year listed here to the second fiscal year, but it doesn't double after that. It it's what's happening is it's going up by 5,000 each year. $5,000 is roughly 1% of the salary. And so it's a, it's a little bit more at the front end and whatnot. And so as a result, when you take that in context of a percentage change year over year, it's roughly in line with something appropriate for a change in in salary amounts per year. Second, I want to highlight something that that Chair Mendoza brought up a little earlier and he he said it in just passing. I think Chair Mendoza would happily say that he and I did have actually quite a bit of back and forth over the question of appropriateness of salary to make sure that we were picking amounts that were appropriate, not only for a president's position, but then appropriate for this region or a public entity and appropriate relative to comparators and so on. Chair Mendoza mentioned something a couple of minutes ago, which is that these amounts throughout the length of President Ryan's contract would still only keep her as the second from the bottom in terms of how much is being paid to each public university president in the state. The goal was not to keep up with the Joneses, but to pay appropriate and give as much as could be appropriately done. And so we have tried very hard to make sure that we picked amounts that were reasonable to compensate without trying to win races other than to keep the president. And I apologize if if any of that came across poorly, but yes, I I appreciate raising that. And and we did have a lot of back and forth to make sure that we were also keeping track of whether these amounts chosen and negotiated were appropriate for the context.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you very much for explaining that. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the work that has been put in into the formulation of this contract. I just want to note that as a board member, it's our job to think of the fiscal responsibility of the university and not just a president or one particular employee, not to minimize the work that that Dr. Ryan has done. We're very happy that she's here and and I'm looking forward to the very ambitious future that she lays out before us. Nevertheless, as we could see throughout the country, there's been boards that have made decisions that were out of step of their charter and why they are they are formed in the first place. And I'm not saying that that's what's happening here. I think this this contract makes sense and it looks like they put a lot of thought into it. But I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't question something that stood out. And that was why I asked. Thank you very much for explaining.
We all need to be great fiduciary, so it's good. Trustee Hoffman?
Oh. I was just going to point out the mathematical correction of the doubling as your finance chair.
Okay, Vice Chair Cronin?
So thank you. Thank you, Trustee Yagon. I I I always appreciate those extra comments. I I want to just add a little bit more context here. So I I just finished a negotiation with an executive director of the OSBA. And I think of our president as our being our executive director. And the the responsibility that the leader of a large organization and I don't even, I can't even off the top of my head say, maybe Leanne can say how many employees and students. I mean, it's in the thousands, right? So so she has a tremendous responsibility on her head. And in the world of executive directors, don't, don't tell her this, but she's not really well-paid even at this. What I look at this, and I will say, Chair Mendoza did ask the committee chairs and myself as a second look before we present, it was presented to the board, and I appreciated that. I see these, these the retention incentive and the deferred compensation, both of those up there are 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 our way of incentivizing our current president to stay with us and to let her know right now that we want her to be part of our university for time to come. This is very common in negotiations right now. These types of incentives, rewards for longevity, there's tremendous, tremendous, any studies that you There's tremendous, tremendous, any studies that you, that you can, and Molly might know this, uh, there's tremendous benefit in the retention of quality leadership to the university. So um it's very, this is, this is a really important piece of this contract, in my opinion. In my opinion, this is one of the most, the, these two incentives are one of the most important pieces. And I fully support them because um the longer that we have a, a, a high-functioning president at our head is, is the better that we have for all, every one of us at the university. So that's, that's my point of view.
Thank you. Trustee Kikul and then Trustee Hoffman?
Um, okay, this is more of a comment um about uh Dr. Ryan. Um, so I'm just gonna say as a student, she's been like a great, an incredible person on campus. Like, um, when I'm talking to her, usually like when it comes to, you know, presidents, I'm like, oh my gosh, it's a president, you know? But uh she, it doesn't feel that way. It's like I'm talking to someone who genuinely wants to be involved in like every aspect of like student life. Um, when she sends out announcements, there's nothing that goes unnoticed, no accomplishment, no goal that's gone unnoticed that she doesn't bring up or doesn't praise. Um, at the same time, she, I don't know if she's mentioned this, but she actually created a, a student success commission, um, which is comprised of students from all types of like populations on campus, not just a certain group. And they've been active in making sure like every on-campus uh club, every organization has been like spoken for. Um, making sure that uh the president knows of these, like any kind of like challenges or any kind of successes that these students have. So I really advocate for Dr. Ryan.
Trustee Hoffman?
You're gonna hate me. Can you, Craig, can you put up the redline version? I just noticed something that I have some angst about.
Not yet.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You're gonna hate me more. Can we go down to new number eight? Okay, back, there we are. So during Dr. Ryan's transition to the presidency, the university will pay for up to three personal trips for her and her husband to La Grand for house hunting if the university requests. Dr. Ryan to campus, uh, does that need to be struck?
Yeah, it should, uh, it should not have made his way uh into this version. Thank you.
And I don't, I would say I thought that the most modern version already had it out, but maybe it didn't. But we talked about.
I had thought it did. Um, but we will make sure that um it is taken care of accordingly. But it, house hunting expenses removed. We'd rather she not be hunting for houses now.
Yeah. And those are also.
Well, she might be. I don't know how.
Those were elements too that she, uh, she had asked for things to be modernized out to. Um, so there was different areas where um there was a thing about being tenured professor. And now that she had already been um in that role, that if she was to, so like if she was to be successful and if she was to leave or not leave, leave the position, tenured. So we modernized and updated that. And then she also talked about that section too. She's not doing those things um and those travel expenses for that. So there, there are things that she had asked for. This might be a, an older version, but I know that.
Okay.
We've talked about that.
And regardless, I think then, Chris, what that means is when a resolution is proposed to, if the board decides to adopt this or to approve it, that it could just be approved with the modification of striking this sentence.
Yes, um, I'm glad you mentioned that. Most uh action items before the board are done by motion. Uh, in this case, uh, with presidential contracts, we actually have resolutions. And so there is a resolution attached to the cover sheet. Uh, and uh, so we, and the resolution has the contract attached to it. So I think uh, as Craig mentioned, um, any motion to approve the resolution would just specify that that con, that sentence would be stricken from the attachment.
The only other thing I, I want to point out is, is that the, the, the payments that are made in July will go on the following fiscal year, even though they're for the previous fiscal year though.
Yes.
Expenses in the following fiscal year.
Uh, and yeah, Leanne and I have talked a little bit about the timing for those. I, I'm gonna give her notice annually as the date's approaching so that she can plan for that in her payroll work.
But she gives you notice first. Um, with that, I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve the resolution with the amendment that's been discussed.
I will second that motion. All right, team, I know this was a lot of deliberation, so thank you for that. So it's been moved by Trustee Hoffman and it's been segmented by Trustee Real. All in favor of the motion to approve the contract, please say yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any who opposed, please say no. The motion passes. So we're gonna do this last piece, closing remarks. I know that we're, we're almost at the end or we're at the end. Um, I'd like to go through Terry, so Terry Thompson, then through on. And if there's anything that you want to say about uh the meetings or any uh good things, anything that you think we can improve on, um, things that we can work on in between, let me know. But uh, any thoughts that you have, Terry?
No. Other than it's Karen.
Yeah, I, I do, but there's a lot to take in, so I don't think right now, give me a night or, or two to sleep over it and maybe I'll, I'll send you an email if you don't mind.
That's great.
Okay.
Cedric?
Uh, no. I think it was a good meeting. Appreciate everyone's participation. Um, sure, everyone's driving home safe that's having to travel and uh got some weather outside. I did want to ask, uh, just on the record, if uh we were discussing Robert's Rules yesterday, would there be, uh, be curious if the rest of the board could get that book? I don't know that anyone else wants to go through light reading, but I'd be interested. Um, and just, just for the sake of meeting, um, meeting preparedness and everything, so.
I do have, uh, you, you, you don't want to look at that book, believe me. Um, but I do have a summary that, that I was going to give George. It's, it just is like a seven-page cheat sheet. Um, and then I'll give it, I'll email you a copy of that too.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And maybe if you want to lead some professional development in uh.
I'll be happy to email that to you.
There's, there are, I, I think there is a, a sort of for dummies. It's not, it's not literally a for dummies, but there's a, a summary book that's quite a bit shorter that talks about those.
There actually is a Robert's Rules of Orders for Dummies because I have a copy of it and it's great. So, so I, I recommend it because it's very laid out very well. But one of the things that another board I'm on does is they actually have a little um laminated uh one sheet of the basic motions of Robert's Rules of Order that every person gets to have at their place. And it, it can be very helpful. So maybe that's something to think about for future meetings.
Trustee Kikul?
Uh, no comment so far, other than my name is Orang. Yeah, but yeah, no comment so far. Thank you.
Excellent.
Uh, it, it, first of all, it was presumptuous for me to give him a book for dummies. So that's why it wasn't. A-actually, I, I do have one item that, that I would like the board to discuss, consider discussing in the future. You know, we, we've heard there's an AI committee um that's, that's working. I think it would be very helpful for the board to, to be updated and briefed on, on what the university is, is up to in terms of, of dealing with AI uh policies. Once, once that committee's work is done, I know I'd be personally very interested.
That's good. Trustee Smith?
Yeah, thank you for a really good meeting. I um, I, I talked with Chris a little bit about this this morning, but uh I'm, I was interested sort of in the process of hearing public comments and how the board takes that in or if we have discussions around public comments. So anyways, that's just kind of a process piece for me that um I'm interested in. And um I think that's.
Bring it real quick. I had a phone call that just hit me, so I, but public comments and understanding more of the policy behind.
So it, you know, we had a public comment. It came through. I understand that there's really not response to the public comment, but how do people that, you know, make the effort to come provide a public comment to a board meeting? How are they responded to? Does the board talk about it in any way? Just sort of the process piece around public comments is, is my interest, so.
And just so you know, uh, what I mentioned is that board statement number one requires us to give a response to the comment. Uh, it's usually from the chair or I may draft something for chair review. Um, approximately within a week's time of the meeting. And that's our sort of formal response. Uh, a larger question, I think behind your, your um, your question to me was, uh, if you think a comment is about something of substance that needs to be dug into more, how do we go about doing that?
Yep, yep.
And uh, um, I think, you know, you can either say so at the time or say so to the chair or the president or, or me. Uh, and um, it would typically, that follow-up conversation would happen in, in the appropriate committee meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Trustee Stanley?
I think I'm gonna copy everybody on that side of the room. Um, I'll probably email you something later and then of course leave it to our uh financial folks to want copies of Robert's Rules. Chuck bringing the book and Cedric, like, we all need the book. So hope it. I hope everyone drives home safe and yeah, great meeting. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Thank you all for making the trip and safe travels to everyone. I would like to continue to have updates on the OPM uh the, as the committee. Uh, my understanding after talking with President Ryan is that committee that we heard from is gonna continue to meet. I'd like to, as a board, continue to have updates on what their discussion is. And um, anyway, see you all next time.
Trustee Valerio?
Thank you. Uh, great meeting. Thanks. A couple of things stood out for me, George, especially when you stopped the conversation and the questions to honor yesterday, to honor the committee that was working on Rise Point. That's pretty cool. And when we have people that really put many hours and work and that, you said, hold on a second. I'd like to take a little change and that was pretty neat. I, I really, I really enjoyed that because sometimes there is a lot of work done behind and it's nice to honor, at least with a brief, a minute statement, all those people that showed up. Likewise, we saw the experiential learning from the students. Phenomenal job that have been slightly associated, associated with on the work of Mask, Maxwell there. But that is a great example. After, after that presentation, I wanted to go back to college and I came home and I told my wife, he's an archaeologist. Now that we're old farts, we should go back to EOU and really do something cool. That's what I told her yesterday when I got home. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all. Um, great, great, I'll just say, meetings, great two days. I appreciate all of you guys uh putting your time and energy into this. I know it takes a lot um for us to give some input and to listen and to support EOU. And you know, I'd just say a great, a great board is also um a reason why institutions do okay. Um, and, and if you're an average board, I'll just say we'll, we'll probably be average. Uh, or if we're a bad board, we'll probably go in the wrong direction. So for us to, to be bought in or for us to, to get focus and attention and for us to ask questions and for us to care, that's, that's a good thing. So really thankful for all of you and thankful for Chris and Susanna for all the time that they do to, to help organize us. And we've got uh great administrators and great people uh working here, so very thankful for all of you.
Good boards are led by good leaders. So, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes uh our board trustee meeting.